Alrighty, please rise for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, just as for all. Roll call coming.
Let's get our bid here. Mr. Case layout.
Here.
Sling.
I've delayed.
Mr. Rikaski.
Here.
Mr. Stadler.
Here.
Mr. Sane.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Delayed.
Ms. Huer.
Here.
Mr. Wade.
Here.
Friar exits, man.
Exits around the back of the LGI.
Alright, we have two workshops tonight. The first workshop is gonna be Mrs. Laura Cahill, Principal, South Avenue.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about the goings on at South Avenue Elementary School this year. Uh, when I first saw this quote, "Work hard, be kind, and a means the good will happen," it really, um, put to focus what our philosophy is at South Avenue School. This school year, we have three areas of focus. It would be equity, communication, and excellence. So this school year, we developed an equity team at South Avenue Elementary School, and our team met with the teams of the other schools in district. And in September, we, um, met as a district team to talk about district goals and district philosophies, and then brought that information back to our school. And our equity team discussed areas where we could target work for this school year, and that was to increase cultural competency of all faculty and staff, to increase community engagement and parent involvement, and to improve student performance and program participation. So some of the areas that we discussed via our equity team and then with our faculty as a whole, were having a welcoming environment. And some of the ideas that we talked about were greeting students at the door, inviting chaperones on trips, increasing positive communication with parents, maybe taking photos of them at work and sharing that with the families. Uh, school family connections. We were talking a lot about apps. We use Remind app, Talking Points, that seems to be helpful for some families. Having some secret readers come in, something during the day where we invite families to join us. Um, that was something we talked about. Having empathy of teachers and staff. We discussed teacher kindness and tolerance. Talking about spotlight on issues with regards to educational, um, topics. Having a parent share about family history and culture. And also student interviews, student interviewing each other, students sharing their, uh, their culture with the class and the visible. And also facilitating academic and emotional excellence. Some ideas we're talking about were to find interests to incorporate into lessons, to foster closer relationships. Celebrations, modeling for and with students, and also complimenting those small accomplishments. Another area that we're talking about as an equity team was how can we support parent involvement? And one of the areas we're talking about is how can we support our families whose English maybe isn't as strong? How can we translate information for them? We're very fortunate to have faculty on staff who are bilingual, uh, but we don't have a translation service per se, um, available. So we've really tried to make it an, uh, an option for us to reach out to all of the families. We actually learned from our E and L teacher that Bosie's, I'm gonna another question to Bosie's, has, um, a service where they can offer a translator to come in. We have a family from Jordan who speaks Arabic, and she was able to reach out and, um, get the Arabic translator to us for a family meeting, which was very helpful to that family. So we also were talking about annual traditions and events. And this is a picture of our first annual, um, Family Picnic Day. We kept our lunch periods the same, but invited our families to join us on our lawn out front. And they were able to enjoy lunch with their families, with their children. And that was a really well-attended event, and it was really great feedback from families. It was also a beautiful day, so that didn't hurt at all. But that's something that we definitely are going to keep going as a tradition, because that was something that we heard from our community that was very important to, uh, and enjoyable to them. Improving student performance and program participation. One of the things we talked about as an equity team was handing out a family survey. We wanna find out what information do our families wanna learn more about? And what events are they interested in going to? And that's something that we're developing now and will go out soon from our equity team. Our STEAM night at Open House was another very well-attended event. This was a twofer. We know that families are coming into Open House. What can we do to connect other events happening then? We had a STEAM night, so while our families are visiting the classrooms and touching base with teachers, they then were able to come to the cafeteria and participate in events and exhibitions at the STEAM night, which was great. Um, knowing how successful that STEAM night was, we were talking with our STEAM committee, and we're going to have a coding event happen this school year, which is when, uh, children and a family member will come with and work on some coding projects, and they can kind of show off what they've been working on in school with their parents. Communication. So ways that we communicate out are via the website, Twitter. We have our Twitter page embedded in our homepage, so people can look on our website and find our Twitter information. We do some of the newsletters and calendars, robocalls. That's a really great use for information specifically if we have an event with just one grade level, let's say, and there's like a field trip that we need to cancel, we can touch base with just those families. Um, again, we talked about the parent survey. We really wanna get that family information. And we have a robust student council this school year, who are very happy to share the student perspective with us and, um, for the goings on in the school and also in the community. So that's, that's information that we're talking as well. So student achievements. So we're looking at quantitative and qualitative data this school year. And this information is coming from New York State Union Math Assessments, our DRA, African reading assessments. Every beginning of the school year, we do a curriculum-based measurement for writing screeners, where we can identify students who have specific writing challenges. We can get going on supporting them write in the beginning of the school year. Um, we also do aims lab for our primary students, where that's where we can assess and also progress monitor. So we also will encourage the students utilize guided reading groups, which are small group reading instruction, which help with different, different reading instruction to target specific needs of the students in that group. We also will do some double dose of foundations. Foundations is a multi-sensory reading program that will target foundational skills, semantic awareness, word study fluency, vocabulary. Reading Plus is a program that we use that supports reading comprehension. And the LLI gifts are intensive small group work that will target comprehension, vocabulary fluency. So when we have all of this information from student work, how do we touch base and figure out what to do with that information? We have a grade level of faculty meetings and PLCs. This is an opportunity to share information about our goals, and also for our PLCs to collaborate with their peers and discuss student achievement, and also learn from one another. This school year, we are, um, also meeting on response to intervention meetings, which is when we discuss students who are studying academically or behaviorally. And this year, we're having a very strong focus on Tier One. Those are the supports that happen within the classroom before we're even referring out for services, for Tier Two, Tier Three services. What supports can we offer the classroom teacher in small group work before we're referring out? So that's something this year that we're really focusing on. And also, I wanted to talk about technology and Makerspace. As you can see on the bottom picture, our students are utilizing the Makerspace to develop their own versions of bridges. And on the top was our very first, um, 3D printed item, which is a Panther paw pendant. So our kids are loving using this technology. We are a punitia school, um, and our yearly focus is the culture of kindness. But this month is January, and we're talking about dreams and Dream Day. We started our, um, all-school assembly showing Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech, and then challenged our students to identify what their dreams are. Um, I do have some examples, second grade. And if you get the first of second grade in kindergarten, then we're forcing this in our lobby for our kids, for their families to see. Um, we also do something called Coffee Possum, which is for anybody in the school, any adult in the school can identify another student, and they catch them doing, doing good, um, which is nice. Sometimes it might be our head custodian, it might be the, the head server in the kitchen. So it's nice that the kids are getting that acknowledgement from all, all areas. We do committees that have a student focus, a faculty focus, or a curriculum focus. And this school year, we're actually looking at attendance data specifically for students who have chronic tardiness. Uh, we want kids who come to school to feel welcome, and we want them to be ready to learn when they come to learn. But we also know that we may need to support these families in getting their students here on time. And that might be reaching out, home visits, touching base about what we can do to help, um, them get into school earlier. So that is a new, really good service here. We are also very, very fortunate to situate any fantastic organizations and agencies and businesses who support events at our school. Um, I just wanna talk about a few of these. As you can see, this picture is from the ballet art studio. Uh, our students are able to walk to the ballet art studio, get some movement class, which is really exciting for our primary students. Uh, we are, it's not on this list, but we are a integrated preschool setting. This is our second year that we've partnered with Mid-Hudson Regional Hospital, and it's been a really great partnership. So our Beacon Gen Ed preschool staff and the Mid-Hudson Regional Specialist Staff work together in our building and support students with and without special needs. We have a second year, and it's a fantastic partnership, and it's really been a great program for us. And finally, I do wanna make note of the Common Ground Farm. We, uh, they've been fantastic, supporting us with holiday meals. And for years, we had a backpack program where students who were food insecure were able to get, uh, weekly backpacks on Friday. And that was headed by Ms. Jackie, Jackie Fisella Mills, who was a volunteer of the Food Bank of the Hudson Valley. She retired last June. So it was a really big hope for us to not have that support for our kids. And Common Ground Farm, specifically Central Wyman, really came to the forefront to support us, to make it happen. I'm very proud to say that next month, we will be starting the program, so our students, um, will be receiving backpacks again on a regular basis. So we're really, really happy for them. Um, at this time, I'd like to show a little video of, uh, our students performing a morning beauty segment specifically for equal.
Hello, South Avenue. Today is... We have a breaking news story. South Avenue Elementary School is going to be linking with an elementary school in Ethiopia. Specifically, the Aravantu School in Gondar, also known as Cabela Three School. The school goes from grades K to eighth, and has around 1,000 students. Where is Gondar, Ethiopia, you ask? Well, let's find out. Ethiopia is right around here, and Ethiopia is across the Atlantic Ocean in the continent of Africa. Right here. And... And Gondar is right around this way.
So now that we know where Ethiopia is, what does it mean that we'll be linking with Cabela Three School? Well, students and staff will both have schools, will be communicating with each other through letters. Students might talk to local communities with the other, each other, or talk about key questions like, "Why is education important?" Teachers might exchange ideas about curriculum or teaching styles.
Why would we do that, you ask? Linking with another school gives students a chance to communicate and learn from students of a very different culture. Linking encourages pupils to appreciate diversity, both locally and globally, and challenge stereotypes. And linking with, and linking will give the whole school opportunities for interesting cross-curricular projects that unite teachers and students in a school-wide project.
Here are a couple pictures from the school from our library visited on October 2.
Arbatu Anzessa Elementary School is set on a large site nestled in a green and countrified valley on the edge of Gondartown. The name of the school is linked to the nearby church. The school is also known as Cabela Three Elementary after the local district had served. Peoples from grades one to eight are taught in a shift system, where half of the young people attend school for four hours in the morning, and the other half attend in the afternoon. The school was established in 1989.
At this early age, most lectures are in Amharic, the official language of the Ethiopian government. Children study many of the same subjects as Western schools, such as math, science, history, and geography.
The school has nine classrooms, all made of mud and wood construction. South Avenue is looking forward to linking with the Cabela Three School. Have a great night, South Avenue. My name's Samiha.
And we do have our teacher who has been to Ethiopia with us here tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Lauren? Alright, thank very much. Next, we have the architects, um, to present on our capital project.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Phil Zeppe, running back architecture. This is Jeff West from UW Mark's, uh, Architectural Group. Jeff is the construction manager for the district. For the past year, we've been working on the capital project. We're at a major milestone now where we've completed our construction documents. We received approval from S U D. We have a building permit, and now the project's going out to bid. And there's a few more details we need to nail down in terms of procurements and everything that we wanna talk to you about. But first, I wanna take you through our construction document presentation. We'll talk briefly about the scope, we'll talk about the budget, we'll talk about the project schedule. So, uh, we reported to you at the schematic design level, I think over the summer, uh, what the scope was, and we've gone through cost estimates and budgeting and value engineering. And this is the, the scope. It's pretty much the one, what we talked about. It includes renovations in each of the buildings. It includes a new sports field, high school, selected roof replacements, exterior work, interior work. But this is all pretty much the same. We did do value engineering. We did pull a couple things out in order to make the budget work, which was a good one. So high school, middle school, men, um, pretty much the same. Forest till south and sergeant, pretty much the same. Where do you see something in gray? That is something that we looked at and said, you know, we can defer that for the time being. We were struggling with the budget. We were trying to make sure that we met, uh, the budget that was approved, uh, a year ago, it was past December. So the scope remains the same. Some of the things that we were unable, that we took out of the project, you know, we were doing, uh, kindergarten classrooms, there's a portion of the ceiling we were replacing, but we decided to close in and do some other work. In the gym at the South Avenue School, we were taking the opportunity to replace the stair treads that, you know, are between the seats. Uh, we decided to defer that. And then we were also, we added to the project with the hopes that we had the budget, an alternate boys' toilet room at the lower level, the sergeant room, or the sergeant school. We're unable to do that at this time. It was just too expensive in terms of our, uh, project cost. But the scope again covers every building. It's got, we're doing accessible toilet rooms and numbers of things. I'm gonna just move right through, unless there's any questions on the scope, then I'll just go right through. So the next is the project budget. At the top, you see the approved total cost of 8.995 million. Out of that, the district gets a piece of it, about 20% for their costs to manage the project, which includes professional fees, insurance, testing, and numbers of other things that you need to do to make the project work. And then there's the construction cost budget, which is the budget that Jeff and I manage for you. And so, as we've been through our designs, you can feel the marks to the estimates, and I'll let Jeff talk about the estimates and the numbers pull up.
You know, what we did, we had to get down to, uh, obviously, what your budget could afford. We're considerably above that in the beginning when the plans were first estimated. We were about 8.6 million. We got down to 7 million, which is about 500,000 hundred, what we believe we have available for construction funds. We wanted to be under, in case the bids come in high, which it do sometimes. The bidding environment is, is really fluctuating right now, and has been for the last year. So we tried to land about 500,000 dollars under what you could afford to give us that wiggle room, and then we put what Phil was mentioning, some alternates in, which are, these are bid by the contractors, although they do not have to be accepted by the owner when the bids come in. If you want to accept them, you can. If you don't want to, you don't have to. The base bid will stay the same. So if you, you can see, if you added all of those items, which is mostly, you got the athletic fields, we'd be about 50,000 dollars back above the budget, based on the current estimate. If the estimate, if the budgets come in or the prices come in lower, we can afford everything. If they come in higher, we'll have to prune a couple of these out. We'll have a discussion, and ultimately, the board makes that decision. But right now, we, we think we're at a comfortable place. We're right about seven and a half million with all the alternates, which is the scope that we were given, that is important to the school district. We think we can afford it. We need to still decide on some procurement methods, meaning public bidding or co-op or state contract for some of the things which we talked about, I don't know, tonight.
Well, there's, there's another slide we can do.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later. But, uh, these prices here, the, the alternate prices that you're seeing there, the majority of them are state contract or co-op, right, co-op pricing, which is a finite price that's already been quoted to us, which we can agree to and the owner can accept. You don't have to go out to competitive bidding. The other opportunity is you could go out to competitive bidding. It may be lower, it may be higher. The downside of that is if it comes in lower, something like the field, the turf field, if it comes in lower, uh, at first, you'd think that would be a great idea and save some money, but you, you don't know if they can get a qualified bidder. We'd have to argue about, you know, is the bidder qualified in field turf, you know, athletic fields like that. These, uh, contractors that are giving us these state or co-op prices, we're vetted. We know, we know them well. We know their experience. We know they'll do a high-quality job. But that's a decision ultimately, the board makes.
I'd also like to point out that the sports field is in the base bid estimate, in that almost 7 million, 6.998. The savings that you see for the high school sports field state contract is the difference between the, the site work that was estimated for that work and what a group of contractors who are on the state contract system offered in terms of providing the, the field, almost as a turnkey. It includes the field and the fencing and all of the site work entailed in that. So there's a savings in that regard going with the state contract. The other category is the press box, the bleach, and bleachers, sports field lighting, and the site path lighting were things that were added to the project in order to make the sports field complete. So those are carried as always. And as you can see from there, we're very, very close to the target, so it's possible to get the sports field and all of those other renovation, all of the other renovation work done with the...
Just one clarification. So when you came up with your design, and then, um, you had Mark and, had Mark's, uh, you know, Jeff and his team do an estimate based on their experience and the current pricing that, that we know of, 'cause, 'cause things woven down, go up with the best estimate that you could to see if it all works. But then you still have to go out to bid for, for much of it, and you're not quite sure whether those bids are gonna come back yet. You're going for competitive bid, but that, that'll be the defining moment where we'll know how it compares to what your initial estimate was, right?
At that point, you'll know all the definite processes that you're gonna have to accept over Jeff.
Right, okay.
Right. No one controls the market. You know, we put our best foot forward. Jeff's estimate is, is not the low bid. It's supposed to be a mid-range bid, so we have some little bit of comfort there. There is contingency in that. But we need to hear from what, we need to hear what the market's gonna tell us, and that's what happens on bid day, when you get the bids and you get the numbers of what people are willing to do this year.
And also, I think we discussed, uh, you know, we had gone out early for getting our state approvals. That puts us in a good position, right? So we, we pre-planned well in order to put us in a good position for getting the bids back.
We're, we're at opportune time now for a better bid for the summer's work.
Yeah, and if you look at the, like, there's a, there's a local printer that does a lot of the bidding for this area, and, you know, they have a number of bids in January, but as February comes in, there aren't that many bids yet that are due, so I think it's gonna be a good bidding requirement. So, um, that's the budget. I think we're in good shape. And then in terms of construction contracts, right now, we've got the project set up into the, to be five different contracts. Um, if we go with the state contract route for the sports field, that site work contract might, might not be bid. It might all be folded into the, uh, state contract work. So then we're doing general work, plumbing, PVC, and electric. And then we're recommending the cooperative contracts, state contracts, co-op contracts for the sports field, the sports lighting, the bleachers, the press box, science casework, classroom casework. And the other, um, benefit of using the state system is that you can specify what you want and work with the vendor, knowing that when you establish a certain level of quality, you're going to get it. All of these state con, all of the state contract work has already gone through the public bid process. You don't need to do anything more to procure it as, you know, as a public bidding. So, I mean, there's the, uh, one thing that's missing from this list that we didn't get a price today, on the path lighting. We also have a cooperative state contract priced for the path light. And they're all within the budget, and they're all starting to make a certain amount of sense. So here's the capital project schedule. We're way over, um, right where that green line is. And we pretty much maintain the schedule. That orange bar there that you see is the, uh, State Education Department approval process. We finished our, uh, construction documents in the summer, uh, in the state end. Even with the, um, expedited review process, it still took us, I think, several months to get through that process. We got that at the end of November. We have a final review at the end of November. So we're all set there. And then we've been spending this past month just doing, you know, working on the, working on the state contract numbers, meeting with the facility committee, working on value engineering. And so now we're at the point where we can do bid and award. Bids would be, uh, right now, we're looking at a schedule that would get bids due on February 12th. And then there would, there's a board meeting directly after that. We would have recommendations ready for that.
Right, the, the, the plan is to be ready to discuss, uh, on the 25th, right? Board meeting on the 25th.
So everything is coming together, and then that gives plenty of time for the contractor to, contractors to mobilize. The sports field is very time-intensive. It takes them three to four months to make, to do that whole work, so we're gonna get them started as soon as we can in April. And then the rest of the contractors will be mobilizing, and they will start their work as school ends in June. The idea is to have substantial completion at the end of the summer.
Right, and all, and all the work is coordinated with, uh, Anthony Demato is the primary contact, and of course, when and how the workers and, you know, can start in different areas will be decided upon, agreed upon, you know, based on school schedules and things like that, so there's no interruption. So that's all reviewed, and, and Matt is involved with, uh, with making those determinations, such as additional impact on the, on the students or the education.
That sort of leads me to the next slide, which is next steps. Um, you know, we need, we, we want, we want the district to review and accept the state con, uh, contract strategy if the numbers are working in our favor. The next step after that is to advertise for bids, which we intend to do this week. Bids due February 12th. And then in the meantime, we wanna meet with each of the building principals and review the work that's happening in their building, so that they're understanding what's gonna be happening this summer. There are places that have to get packed up and, and ready for construction. So, and then we'll meet with the building principals and any other stakeholders or groups that you want us to meet with and describe how this thing's gonna work. As the contractors mobilize, which they'll be doing in March and April, they'll be providing, uh, Jeff with scheduling information. And Jeff's gonna be preparing a master schedule that's gonna control the work we'll do this summer. So they, so we'll know, have a pretty good idea what's gonna happen each week of the summer to share. And then after that, start field work and wait until June to start the building.
Uh, I just wanna stress the importance of making a decision if we're going for a co-op or state pricing, state contract pricing, or if we're going on competitive bid, because that alters the bidding documents, which Phil has given us a couple of times.
So is that, is that a decision, such a decision you need from us? So is that, is that a decision, such a decision you need from us tonight?
Tonight or Wednesday night?
Is that a new item on the agenda?
Yeah, it's accepting our recommendations to use the state contract system, whereas the advertisements are just...
I don't think it takes board action. It doesn't need board action to make that decision. It's administrative action.
Just a consensus would be nice.
Yes. And I think we'll meet on Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
We don't want to put anything out in the street.
Yeah. So I think that's something we could discuss on Wednesday. I mean, if there's any board members that have a preference as to, do you guys understand the difference between the bid and the co-op that they were explaining?
The only thing I understand from that is the state bids have set prices, and competitive was, you know, it's a free-for-all, I guess.
Right. And you don't know who the lowest bidder is going to be for competitive bid?
State bid or co-op pricing has already been bid through the state.
Yeah.
There's competitive bid at one time, maybe, and the other bid is actually, what we've been, anybody who's been, as long as a qualifier.
You're familiar with the companies that are on the co-op?
They're not so.
They're reliable, and they'll come through and fulfill the scopes of that.
We've been working with them because they are reliable.
Gotcha.
I think the discussions we've had make clear that this business of site work for a turf field is a very precise kind of activity, and that you, some people are known to be pretty good at it and have a record, otherwise you may take your chances.
Yeah, competitive bid, you know, you may or may not get a lower price, but you're also, you may be tied to giving that bid the lowest bidder, even though they may not be that good, right?
Correct. Or take up the area and show them that they're not qualified, and they're going to give up easy.
Yeah, and then we'll end up paying for it later.
Right, someone, a site contractor that's not familiar with field, with sports turf work, may not understand the expense of making that subbase perfectly flat, or perfectly crowned and ready for the turf, so that's an expense that you're not beyond their bid, and they might be the lowest bidder.
I think the fact that state bids have already gone through a competitive process, and they're comfortable with the contractors, that'll be probably part of that.
And they all, whether they go with a co-op, they still go built to the specs that you guys had developed?
Yeah, they fall under the same procedures that all the other contractors fall under in terms of how they operate on the site, they have deadlines, they have to provide submittals, and we have to approve their work.
It's apples to apples, the only difference is, it's not another bidding process for them, it's their argument.
Is there any concern about going with the co-op?
We're legally obligated to take the lowest bid when we do the bid.
Yeah, that's part of the risk.
The lowest, is the lowest qualified bidder? Sometimes, you know, if you get a bid on your house, you know, your homework, it may be very low, but the, you know, reviews or the qualifications, you know, may not be there, so then, in this case, they may not be qualified to do that particular piece of work.
I think it's interesting, qualified and quality of the work. I mean, to be qualified, you know, I guess we set the qualifications, and we can say all the things, you know, either having the experience in the field, or a lot of stuff, you know, having these credentials bonded, and a lot of stuff, but, but the quality of the work, I think, is important, and we're investing a lot of the taxpayer money to ensure that, that we need, make sure that we have good quality work.
Especially within something like a athletic field, synthetic turf, that the subbase isn't exactly the way it needs to be, it's going to go directly to the longevity of the field.
I mean, I think it's our responsibility to avoid cost overruns in any of our capital projects, and I think this is one way to do it.
Do we, do we have an idea of what kind of difference we're talking about? I know we can't imagine what the lowest bid might be, but where the state bid comes?
Well, here's an example. On the slide, you know, the person, high school sports field, just been working with a company, a site company, that's, that's, got a turf company and a site contractor and other contractors together, put a number together under the state contract, and we'll put that out. Jeff has also estimated the work based on our design, and so there's a difference of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars between the design asset is estimated and the state contract number, which is a fixed price, you know, it's a proposal, it's a real proposal. So there's savings there already, so that's why we, you know, we think it's a good thing. And we also know that, we know the site contractor, we know the turf supervisor, we know that, you know, all those other things, we know who's providing the press box and bleachers, and who's doing the site lighting, and they're all good providers, you know, worth many, many times.
The two companies that we're dealing with, meaning the site work and the turf contractor that work together under one co-op pricing, that's all they do is fields. We're not going to get a site contractor that's putting pipe in city streets one week and putting a field in the next week, this is all they do is fields.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
I mean, if you look at the timeline that was in the slideshow, you'll see how long the committee has been discussing it and vetting it. Phil's been at every meeting with us at all hours at night, so he's appreciated.
What shocked me was that we're doing bids in February, and then, then you start in April.
It is amazing to see how far down we have come and over. I was like, whoa, that was a good shock. All right, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals, to discuss matters made exempt by federal and state law, FERPA, to review the collective bargaining with the Beacon Associates of Office Professionals, and to seek legal advice from a school attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Counting to questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Nine zero. We should return in, what is it? Hour. One hour.
It's a circle.
All right, I'm going to ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence for Joan Foles, so Ms. Foles was a teacher and a coach in Beacon City School District, and retired after thirty years of service. All right, reviewing the agenda, we do have a resolution to add to the agenda, and it's going to be Resolution 011419A. The resolution is going to read as such, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District does hereby uphold the building principal's decision and suspension of student 80251 issued pursuant to educational law 3214."
What, I don't remember what that'd be.
Oh. It'd be right after consent agenda, Anthony. So that would go to thirteen, the proposed executive session would go to fourteen, and adjourned meeting would go to fifteen.
Okay. Yes, question?
All right, seeing no other corrections, did any other board members review any other items that need to be checked? Hearing none, we're going to go to student and school presentations. Seeing none, we're going to go to parent groups.
Hi, everyone. Hi. I just wanted to give everybody a reminder that this Thursday is trivia night, that's the seventeenth, it's at Hudson Valley Brewery, it's at seven PM, seven to ten. And teams can be up to six people from two to six, it's only ten dollars, and if you don't want to compete in trivia, if you're feeling a little intimidated by all of the trash talking I've done, you can just come and hang out. We have a lot of great raffles, actually, a lot of local businesses have given a lot of great things. So just come and hang out and have some drink specials, there'll be food from Barb's Butchery. I'm going to email you all the link to the event, right, so you can all buy your tickets. Nice one, remind you of that. All right, hope to see you there, thanks.
Thank you. Any other parent groups? Seeing none, we're going to go open to the public, and we had one person sign up, John Mark.
Happy New Year. Hello, everyone. So I am not sure if everyone was able to make the webinar that took place on January ninth, that I think I mentioned the last time I was up here to bring up the issue of, I think, overall education of the Holocaust in our district as a whole, which I think would be a potentially very useful thing for students, I think, beginning in eighth grade, which I think that's when, when the units in social studies classes actually begin to treat that particular topic. I know I saw Superintendent Lannan in the chat room on the webinar, so that's great. If those of you who were not able to see it, I highly recommend it. It's also available on the Facing History website, they generally update it. But I just wanted to reiterate my enthusiasm for this organization. I don't represent them in any way, but I think if there's anywhere, anyway, at this point, I know, I know things have to be planned way in advance, but if there's any way at this point that this organization can, which has an abundant amount of resources that are teaching resources that are entirely free and downloadable, to prepare at least this year's upcoming eighth grade, next year's eighth grade class, for understanding just the historical context for something like the Holocaust, which is understandably a pretty heavy topic to deal with at age thirteen, fourteen, so that there are no unintended consequences to the idea of using terms like Nazism and understanding the full historical impact of Abydosme. That said, I'm still unfortunately dealing with my eighth grader at home who suspects that there are budding neo-Nazis in her school, which I'm trying my best to convince her that that's not the case, but I think that Facing History is a great, is a great place to start, to even prevent the possibility of something like that happening. So I thank you for your attention and everything you do, and hopefully, this is something, partnership that can happen.
Yeah, I can just give a quick update. We, we have a group of high school teachers, English teachers and social studies teachers who are signed up for a four-week webinar, five-week webinar around teaching the Holocaust. We, the middle school, there's, there's a couple other webinars coming up that middle school teachers are going to participate in. Eric and I didn't have an issue getting on, but a couple of our teachers had an issue getting on for whatever reason, something needed to be downloaded, or I don't know what. But we'll work with the middle school folks to make sure they sign up for that and are able to do it. And Mr. Wright and Mr. Saltis are also connecting with Facing History to see about guest speakers for both about the Holocaust and also civil rights movement, because Facing History does a lot of stuff around civil rights movement as well. And so we are also the teachers that we're looking at this with, both, some, actually, it was cool to find out that some of our teachers were already using parts of it, so that was nice to know. But the teachers have been very open and willing and excited to do it. It's, it's, you know, it takes a lot of steps to get to where we need to be, but I think our initial experience has been really positive. And this, the high school course starts in a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Yep?
One started this week, and that's one that starts, actually, both started this week.
Yeah, and the one, I think we are looking, and there's a couple for the middle school teachers that look pretty good that are coming up. One is targeted directly to middle school teachers.
Yes.
So it's, and I, you know, I'm not probably going to participate in every webinar, but I'll do, I'll do some of them, and I was impressed, too. Like, I liked when they brought the teacher in to talk about the project she was doing with her kids. It was well done. Some of these webinars can be not so well-done, so it was really great to see an organization that's doing it well. So thank you. And Mr. Wright has been, I know, working really closely with the secondary teachers to get this moving, too. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to move to superintendent report. All right, we have a, just, we're going to do the budget overview. All right, for the superintendent report tonight, we are just going to do a very brief budget overview to give a sense of what the budget process will look like this year. And to just get it to start us off, I wanted to just put the mission statement up there for a few different reasons. One, we have one now, to prepare every student for learning life and work beyond school, and this is, this comes from the work of our strategic planning committee. I won't go super in-depth on the strategic planning tonight, but that will be, I think, woven through the entire budget process this year, and we're very excited about that. While I'm on this topic, the next step for the strategic planning committee is, strategic coherence planning committee is to meet on Friday. We are developing, this committee's developing a relationship with Snow, and we have to move, I think, the last one we did, which was in November, and hopefully, we're able to meet on Friday. And then Friday, what we're going to do is look at all the data that's been collected through the thought exchange, but also, there are five different subcommittees of this committee, and they've been reaching out to community members, PTO members, groups of teachers, students in some cases, and trying to get also just a lot of information about where we are, what our current state is in regards to implementing some of these things. So really excited about how it's moving. It's really cool to have a mission statement out there that's really clear, and I'm putting it out there because this work, the strategic coherence planning, everything that comes to that, is always going to be at the forefront of everything we do, especially the budget. So, speaking of budget, I wanted to give you all just a brief little update, this is just a little snapshot, we'll provide maybe more historical data at the next meeting, but I was thinking about a way to kind of frame the impact of the decisions the board makes. In the last two years, the board has made a conscious decision to reduce elementary class sizes. Two years ago, I think you added two teaching positions to the elementary ranks, and then last year, you added three. Just, you know, classroom teachers, that doesn't include the PE teachers that were added and other things. And so, instead of averaging all the classes, I thought this was a different way of looking at it. Forty-four of our elementary classes are below twenty students. That's really good. Nineteen of our elementary classes are between twenty and twenty-four. Only one of our classes is above twenty-four, and that's one class of twenty-five fifth graders. This data does not include classes that are designed to be small. Some of our special education classes, you know, only have six, seven, eight people, that's not included in the status, not skewing it. So what we'll do for a future meeting is just provide a little historical context, so you can see the impact. We're going to do this impact work on some of the other budget initiatives from the past. I think it helps provide a little context to the power of a budget, the changes that impact students primarily, but also the people working with our students. And I can attest as a parent, too, that I love the emphasis on elementary class sizes as well. I would put these numbers up with any school district in the country, quite honestly, regarding elementary class size. These are, these are very good numbers, and I think it's something that the board, we oftentimes don't take a step back and recognize kind of where we've come, and I think this is a big one to step back and celebrate. So I want to just put some numbers in front of you, and we can, you know, be even a little bit more specific in the future. So some other data we're going to present, just sort of splash into the process of future meetings, is the changes that have happened at elementary instrumental music, because of our addition of fourth-grade music, we've seen numbers go up quite a bit, but we'll bring that to you in a concrete way, and what, you know, enrollment is in some of our new courses in the high school. All of those things come out of the budget process, which is, is, is quite honestly, you know, the most important thing, or one of the most important things we do. All right, so this is just the budget calendar, and not just, this is the budget calendar, so these are all of our future board meetings. I won't, you know, read everyone to you, the next, we're starting off with athletics, so John Giometta, former baseball player, is batting leadoff for the administrative team. And Andrea and I, at each of these, will also just be updating you on, you know, where we are. You may know the governor's presenting his budget proposal tomorrow, and so, you know, we'll have some information from that that we can share at the next meeting, and also just updates on, you know, other aspects, too, just so, it's not just going to be athletics, we'll provide a sort of an overview in a way, every, every, every single board meeting. Some things that are not on this calendar are the public, the public part, so obviously, our board meetings are... So obviously, our board meetings are public, but once our strategic coherence plan gets a little bit more established, I think getting through this retreat on Friday is really important. I'll be meeting, doing some community forums and some PTO forums in February and March, mainly about the strategic plan, but it'll also be about, you know, the budget process. We'll go back out and do another round of forums in April and May to discuss what's actually, you know, in the proposed budget and to talk about the vote and, you know, things that we're expecting to see. And Marie has some things about what the knowns so far.
What we do know. So there's a couple of numbers that directly impact the budget. The teacher's retirement, the contribution the school district will pay, they're estimating between eight and a half and nine and a half, which is lower. We were at ten point six last year, so that's definitely a savings for us for going forward. Employees' retirement system is projected to be the same or less. Employees' retirement system's a little more complicated because we have up to tier six. Each rate, each tier has a different rate, but the average is expected to come in. For us, if it comes in even, it's actually good because we've been anticipating an increase every year, so that will help as well. The tax-based growth factor is something that's done on the tax cap calculation, and we'll start talking about that a little bit more as we go through, but it's 1.0164. That is, again, the highest in Dutchess County for Beacon. That allows the tax levy to grow. As a quick estimate, it allows it to grow over $600,000 this year. It was like 580 last year, so we're in good shape going forward, so I wanted to say that now. The allowable growth factor is tied to the Consumer Price Index, and the Consumer Price Index is a little bit over two, so it's the minimum of. Last year it was two percent, but there's been years that it was one, 1.2, so we're happy that, again, that's two percent, and that's also part of the tax cap calculation. And again, Dr. Landau mentioned the governor's budget presentation will be tomorrow, and we'll see where he goes. Usually, his estimate is low, but we can talk about it at the next meeting, just to give you some idea of where we're starting, you know, where the whole book ends up.
Just going to go back to the calendar. I just realized, you know, we have new members to the board this year, and I'll just share a couple of basics at these meetings. We have the director and our principal or assistant superintendent do a presentation on their budget proposal for their department, and it's a, we will have that presentation to you beforehand, so you can look at it and study it and come with questions. A lot of times, we make adjustments based on your feedback, and so that's, it's a key opportunity for you to get involved. One of these, some of them are pretty straightforward, but one of these has a lot in it, March 25th, Special Education, Structural and Professional Development. At that one, obviously, Dawn Candel and her team will be presenting, but then we'll also include principals, working with Eric and Celia in terms of putting their sort of district-wide and/or school-based proposals out there for what we want to see happen. The actual, you know, overall presentation of the budget is April 8th, and that's when we can kind of get, you know, really down to specifics with budget adoption on April 23rd. Anthony, sometimes we add a meeting if we feel like we need to, so that's something that you would talk about as a board, if you feel like you need a little bit more time as a board to deliberate before that budget adoption on April 23rd. A meeting could always be added in to do that. Budget hearing is just a normal board meeting, right, where we have the budget hearing ahead of time. I really, really work hard to make sure that that budget hearing is not the only avenue for people to get input. I try to, as I said, get out and about a lot, either at PTO meetings or public forums, and I'm really excited to do that this year. So, just some upcoming themes to the budget. I was going to keep repeating the word strategic coherence plan, like, you know, like twenty times on the page, but I thought that'd be overkill, but I put it up there twice because that is going to be the theme. So we are kind of doing an interesting trick here, where we're unveiling, you know, this, at least the framework and backbone of the plan as we're putting a budget together, but I think, I think from what I've seen so far, all of it's very doable. And so my hope and our goal is that, yes, we will be presenting things that we want to see in this year's budget, but we also are going to be challenging, especially things that are on the instructional side and the professional development side, to come to you with multi-year plans for initiatives. They may not have, you know, dollar amounts attached to each of the years because it's sometimes hard to project out on some of these things, but we don't want to come to you just with like, here's what we want to do next year, we want to also bring some thoughts for future years. That's the whole point of all this, and we wanted to really connect with where this plan is taking us. Another theme I see is professional development. One of the things that's really coming out of this work of the strategic planning committee is the need for more professional development. I think this is an area that Beacon has not funded as well as it could have in years past. We want to try to really address that through some summer trainings throughout the school year trainings for not just the teaching staff, but all of our staff. I think we've made some great investments the past few years with PD, but I think we need to ramp it up even more, so that's a theme that you're going to be hearing throughout this. And then something that, you know, we'll find a way to work into some of the different board meetings, but I think there's some, I say non-instructional, everything ultimately is instructional, but I think we do need to look at updating some of our furniture in all of our, in all of our schools and also some of our playground equipment. That doesn't happen just in one budget cycle either, happens over multiple years. We are very, very excited to get this kicked off, and really, I also want to thank the board for supporting the strategic planning process. So, so, you know, part of your job is to, you know, challenge us to really try to connect this budget to the plan and to really push our thinking for, can we, you know, can we even get more done in a budget, and what's our three-year plan, what's our four-year plan, what's our five-year plan? We may have some bumps in the road and not do it perfectly this year, but that's our goal, is to really be thinking long-term, to really connect it with the plan, to focus on student experience here, and to really focus on learning for everybody in the district. And so, so that's what we hope to bring. We're setting the bar high, and we're putting a lot of work in. And again, that elementary class size numbers, just to go back to that, are really strong. And I wanted to just remind you of that because that's what happens in a budget process. We make, we make pretty strong impacts with things like that, and hopefully every year we can be making impacts across sort of the, you know, the vast respective of our district. So, I have to take questions, or you guys can just ask questions during your comments.
I have a question.
Yes.
So do you plan, I know it's, you're kind of doing things in parallel with the strategic coherence plan, but will the presentations be laid out in a manner so we can see the ties of, you know, the new initiatives or the new, you know, here's our, I know it's not out yet, but here's this, and here's how we're tying, here's how we're tying.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going to see those ties most strongly starting in March. The plan isn't, you know, fully sort of established until February. Not, not to say that athletics doesn't, isn't connected to the plan, but like, you know, we may not be able to tie it in as strongly just because it's not completely done, we don't like it's done before we present, but we will be making those ties. I tried to put a lot of the things that are, I think, really strongly tied to the plan, both the facilities part and then the instructional professional development part, when we knew the plan would be in place, and, but, but we will be making those ties, and we'll try to make really strong ones. I, I can't say enough about how excited I am to have, I, you know, obviously excited to have that mission statement, but to have this plan in place, it's kind of like the beginning of the hard work, so I'm not all acting like it, that something becomes easy, but it's really going to be great to have this foundation. So yes, long, or short answer is yes, we will make those connections.
Just a request that I'll follow up with in writing. In advance of the, the special ed presentation, if we could just have a glossary for, because I think it just makes it more meaningful, especially for newer board members, just to understand what's being said, because it's usually a lot of acronyms.
Yeah. I mean, with each of the, you know, school department presentations, we have the first part of the year, I've tried to de-acronym some of those, but I know they still sort of seek them, but we will certainly do that.
I typically ask a question of all the presentations, so, I mean, I think it's only fair that I give some advance notice. I, the presentations are present, the backing, the backup amounts that the departments are asking for, for this budget cycle, and I typically also ask is how, that's the, you know, that's the current vision, you know, what's the future vision, too, you know, this is what you need to comply, and let me, please, I'd like to see, you know, from there where you build to go further, you know, further in the vision.
Yeah, I agree. I, this is a budget-related, but I wanted to let the board know on January 28th, we will be also proposing to do a workshop on the Equity Record Card, which is really close to being ready to roll out, so, so, so I, obviously, that really feeds into this process, too, that's the data part. So, so I just kind of remembered that as you were speaking, but we're all finding a go on the 28th of that. But we will be asking our folks to think big and to think multi-year.
Thank you. You may have mentioned this before, but will we be getting to it ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm lying today, so.
It just helps. It helps.
If I also, if I get updates from my professional organization or yours, we'll be passing those along in the budget. I know it is, but does theirs, but sometimes the superintendent association or the business officials, official association has kind of more specific stuff that some of you might like enjoy reading about the budget process, so we'll forward those along on a weekly basis, too.
Maybe not within this budget calendar, but where does potential grants fit in, or they just come, we just, as they come up, we just kind of jump on?
Yeah, as they come up. I always check the state website. I haven't seen great opportunities like right now in terms of those sort of larger state grants, but yeah, they just, when they come up, we'll try to go after them. I know some of our committees, like the Volskis Committee and the Sustainability Committee, are also looking at different grants to do as well, so it'll come up through that kind of process as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Noah, Annie, thank you for your patience.
First of all, just to say Happy New Year, happy holidays to everyone. I want to congratulate all of the students who auditioned for Being the Beast on Friday evening. The parts were just released, and I know they were all very excited, and I think everyone got what they wanted, so it was good to see. And that shows in April, and they're actually doing two shows on Saturday instead of their normal one show, which will be exciting. On February 22nd, National Auto Society is doing a movie night called Valuable for Veterans, when we collect hygiene items, canned foods, all of that that will go over to veterans overseas, and they'll be showing Space Jam. Let's see, the girls' bowling team is so far this year is undefeated. They're, they're doing a really good job over there, and they just had a tournament this past weekend where they finished in sixth place out of twenty-something teams. They're having a really good year so far. We want to say good luck to the band. They're going to Disney on Friday for the weekend. I know they fundraised really hard all year, end of last year to go, and they've all been really looked forward to it, so hopefully they all have a great time. And then next week is Regent's Week, so we just wanted to say good luck to all of those taking the regions, and that, we also have a few finals on that week, too, so any students who want to take good luck to them.
Happy New Year, guys. First, I want to talk about the Wizards game, which is originally on Valentine's Day this year. We actually have a library of teachers playing for the district team, and our very unsupervised is going to be coaching, so come out and see. Woman of the World, the club that I co-founded, is starting. It's taken up pretty much, and we're starting a book drive, so any, I would say, slightly used to new books that you have, this range from YA novels, adult novels, children's books, textbooks that are like no longer used. Miss Gaspar or D126 is collecting a bunch of books right now. They're all on her desk right now, so we have to sort them, but bring them in, and we're planning on donating to shelters or schools abroad, so, yeah. Also, Black History Month is around the corner, so me and Miss Sims and a couple other students met, I believe, last Friday, and we're trying to put something together, so hopefully we can pretty much celebrate in a nice way this year, kind of accurately display what kind of Black history in America. Yeah, that's it.
Great, thank you.
James?
Hi, Happy New Year. We haven't had a policy committee. I'm trying to, actually, right now, schedule our policy committee meeting. We're going to have some trouble getting that locked in. We're down to the last three weeks, basically, 12, 21.
12, 21, 26, Valentine's Day.
Yes, I do. Anthony, can you, can you tell me now if you could do?
I replied already.
Anthony White.
Oh.
For policy committee, if you could do February 12th, 21st, or the 26th, those are our three days that we're.
Did you send it to Laura, too, actually? Because we're trying to get a diversity committee after that. If we can.
He did, he sent us both.
Just sent them. Laura, again, same question.
What was it, 12th, what?
Do you know the 12th, 21st, or the 26th of February?
Twenty-four, you can't do. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six is good.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are not good. If it's a Monday, I could do typically. I, I mean, I'm not available on any Tuesday or Thursday.
Also, none of those days.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are hard for me.
Well, they're all Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I mean, Mondays are good, Wednesdays I can make work, and you're not going to see me on Friday.
All right.
I like that call.
All right, so I sent, I sent around the doodle calendar that has all of my dates. Anthony, Anthony, same, put on his, if you guys could just fill that out, and we'll see which one we can make more.
If you just pick it, like, this is why I wanted to get the dates out at the beginning of the year, so people could plan around, because then you're trying to piecemeal it, when can people make it and stuff, so.
This is the third round of this I'll put out, because people are busy. So if you could just fill this out, Laura, Alyssa, I know you just told me, but if you go ahead and do it, I can see when we can get the most of us.
Is there a check mark? Does that mean I said I was available?
I don't know if to.
I think I already told you.
I think check means maybe. Green means yes, check means maybe.
Good, that's, I have another comment, but just, we'll sort of, we'll stick up. I'm sorry, yeah, I think green means yes.
Listen.
I don't have a committee report, but I do have a nice story. One of my kid's teachers called me Friday night just to tell me that I have a great kid, and I thought that was really cool, and she said she made a New Year's resolution to call three parents with a positive phone call every Friday this year. So I just thought that was a testament to our awesome teachers, so that was, that made my day. That's all I have. Thanks.
Mike?
So I'm looking forward to the budgeting cycle, and also hearing that for the transportation presentation, we're going to have a longer, we're going to have a ten-year plan about our bus needs.
How about we start with five and work our way? Ten might be hard.
Maybe fifteen.
You're talking about the rotation of the buses.
Yes, yes, we should have master plans on our rotation.
Okay, I will work on that.
So I'm looking forward to that presentation. For facilities and operations, we had a great presentation already about the capital plan coming up, and again, the, some of the key dates that we're saying is that the bids will be due, will be coming in on the 12th of February, and we're going to have a facilities meeting on the 20th to go to look at them and then bring it to the board on the 25th, and that really sets us up for issuing contracts and then planning and starting construction, so it's really exciting to get that going. The next facilities committee meeting is this Wednesday, the 16th, at 7:00 PM, and that's all I have.
Anthony?
Good evening. What I do, I helped with the Sargent Avenue painting of the gym. What I do, I, I helped with the Sargent Avenue painting of the gym. I couldn't make the Friday, Thursday and Friday, but I didn't go to Monday. And I'd like to thank the Sergeant PTO, did a great job on that, and Laurie's in the audience.
Best, yes.
Yeah, and took like four or five coats, four coats?
Five coats.
Five coats, yeah.
Twelve, yeah.
It was a really stubborn color that they picked. But the job got done, and that's, and that's great. And too bad I wasn't, I couldn't see the kids when they walked into gym to see, you know, what was going on.
You can see it from space now, so.
Yeah. I also went to the J B Frostel PTO meeting, and that was also great work that they're doing over there. So that was great too. Again, just to piggyback on what James is saying about scheduling the meeting, committee meetings, you know, we're trying to make it easier on the, on the Board members. We're trying to schedule the Diversity Committee meeting the same night as the Policy Committee meeting. So, you know, let's see what we can do with that. You know, even before the Doodle Poll, we were just exchanging emails back and forth at different dates, so it seems to be, it seems to be a very heavy exercise here. The, I, I unfortunately have to report that I will be missing the, I put it in writing, my request for, be an excuse, but I have to miss the January twenty eighth of Board meeting. I did receive deployment orders to go to Chico, California for EPA's response for the recovery of California wildfires. And I'm supposed to be there at seven A M. on the twenty sixth of January. And I won't be back until, I think, February sixth or something. I'm still trying to figure out the logistics of all that. So I'll put my, I, I wish I could just take the conference call. I mean, I did the video thing from California, but it was four time zones away, and I probably don't, can't even guarantee I'll have internet, you know, sometimes. So I hope, ask to be excused, and that's all I have to report.
Chris?
I don't have any committee reports. Most of, like, Facilities is meeting Wednesday, Sustainability is meeting Wednesday. There are some, some initiatives that will be explored at the Sustainability meeting, but nothing is, nothing really worth reporting right now. I just wanted to say, we have this retreat on Saturday, which was part of the strategic planning effort that's been ongoing with the administrators. And I know team members from the Board who have been participating have had a closer look. But I, and I know Matt mentioned it probably five thousand times, or Dr. Landau in his reports, and now. But I, I really think it can't be promoted enough. It's, you know, when you have a district that's gone through as much change as we have and had so much, so many changes in leadership, there's a lot of things that fall by the wayside, and it just ends up, survive, open the doors every year, do what you can. And that, that says a lot about the commitment of our teachers and administrators and staff, that they've, they've held things together as well. But I think they welcome, as much as we will on the Board, just the tremendous sense of clarity that will come from a plan that's informed by the public with the, sort of honed by somebody who has over thirty-five years' experience in education and the consultant that we've, we've hired. And I feel like I'm really excited for everyone to see this, especially teachers, staff, and the community, because I think it'll, it'll give us, you know, direction that we'll navigate towards, and we'll really be serving our students, especially if we follow the priorities we establish.
Yes, from the Public Relations advocacy and legislative side, we did, the district have a, something of a problem with the communication system, which came to my personal attention. So I notified Mr. Keely and learned from him, he's the head of our Technology Department, that part of our learning system didn't work as it was supposed to the last time we had a early or late arrival to school. And apparently some of the people on the list fell off the edge of the digital world. And they're aware of it, and they've done some temporary fixes, and they're trying to figure out how we get it back into full operation. So somebody thought they were forgotten about, it'd be more of a technical glitch, nobody's trying to pretend you don't exist. But anyway, they're working on it. Main part of my comment would have to do with what's going on legislatively. And Mrs. Cordaroni briefly mentioned the Governor's speech coming up. I look forward to that with maybe not fear and loathing, but with concern, because I've seen them before. And usually the Governor comes in with a number that disappoints everybody else who's in the game. And then it gets debated in the legislature. So I reviewed what some of the asks are from some of the organizations. There's quite a few of them, but the Regents proposed one point six billion. According to their news release, I've seen media coverage, they claimed it was bigger, but I read the release, one point six billion in additional investments in education, that's a bold number. Alliance for Quality Education said, how about two point fifteen billion? And the New York Association of School Business Officials said, how about two point one billion? And NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association, in which we're a part, said two point two billion for an overall ask. And that includes foundation aid, which is the biggest, most basic part. And there's lots of different components substating, and so they add them up. We could, if it pleased the Board, offer a resolution of support. If we did so, I would suggest that be in support of the NISBA ask. Since we're a part of that, and that happens to be the highest number among those I reviewed. And communicate that with our legislators in the Governor's Office. It probably falls on deaf ears, once you get to the top of the deep in Albany. But I think it will be of interest to our local legislators if they hear from, say, Mr. White and Dr. Landau in favor of a specific number coming from the Beacon School District. At least they know we exist and we're watching. So if, I'm not sure procedurally what the best thing to do is, should we consider that as potential addition to the agenda?
Well, is that the letter that we looked at at the last meeting, Craig?
No, no, this is, I don't know if we looked at that at the last meeting.
PR meeting.
I don't think it's a specific letter. It's, I reviewed what the, what, NISBA, I asked NISBA if they would forward me their statement on that specific topic. So that's probably in the package.
So we could on Wednesday, right, we're having our meeting on Wednesday? Maybe we could wordsmith it, and then we could look to forward it to the Board?
We could, if the committee is to be in power to do that on behalf of the Board. I'm thinking that the time is of the essence, and probably the sooner we say something, the more effect it has. This process will go on for some time. And, you know, every April one is when they're supposed to be done. They often stop the clock, it doesn't get done until later. But we had also the option of waiting till our next Board meeting.
Well, I think if the committee looks at it, and Wednesday, if the committee looks at it on Wednesday, and then we could share it, and then we can add it to the agenda, and then the Board could come back with some marching orders, and then we'd have something by February, the first meeting in February, if the Board didn't like the way.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah.
So they would be able to see a first read, right? Almost like they'd be able to see what we came up with as a committee? And then give suggestions, and then we could go back and alter them, and then bring it back to the next meeting.
As long as we don't try to fine tooth it to death.
I agree.
Because if, if you do, then the opportunity is lost.
I agree, and I think if NISBA is sending some, like a template or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
So another thing that's going on legislatively is that annual professional performance review is likely to come up again for a serious discussion. It did last year, went through the Assembly, and went into the Senate where it sort of got turned upside down, and then everything blew apart. So there's a lot of interest in this on the part of various associations. Obviously, it's important to teachers. We don't spend a lot of time talking about it, because we tend to think it's like we don't have anything to say about it. But legislative, we do. But this is a very complex issue and certainly requires more thought before we try to deal with it as a Board review.
And it's in moratorium right now, the A P P R. And I think the last thing that I, last heard is that they're looking to revise it, but they still want to tie an evaluation to the teacher evaluation, like a student evaluation to the teacher evaluation, which, as long as that happens.
When was the, when was the last you heard that? Because I feel like at, at NISBA, she was hedging that a little bit.
She was, that was like today I heard it.
Oh, really? Yeah, I guess it's easier not in front of a room with a group of people.
It, well, it's not, it's legislators, it's not her. Right, so she has it in a moratorium, so legislation can take it away. That's the only way, like, she could put it in moratorium, but the legislation has to, sorry.
I would, I think.
Has to act upon it.
In general, thrust of the legislation would be to de-emphasize three through eight assessments in math and English, which is, there are other possibilities too, including greater flexibility in what measures of evaluation you could use. As I say, this one is very complex, and I think if we forward around or refer you to some of the writing that's been done on this, we'd have a better understanding of the ground that we're attempting to stand on here.
A question for Craig.
Craig, there's been some talk, and I, I don't, the reason why I'm at, this question is that I don't understand the, the, is this a push to fund schools a different way than the, than the school aid formula? Are you aware of what that is? I mean, and, and, and not, I'm not asking for explanation now, but, you know, at some point, is it something worth that? Maybe perhaps you could find somebody who could present it on a workshop, what this new, what this new thing is.
There's likely to be some discussion about that legislatively. I know that there's advocacy to make it fairer and make it more accurate based on the kind of demographics, demographics that districts actually have. But I don't think there's ever been any real progress on this. It's one of those things that comes up a lot and never gets settled.
So, yeah, something about going away from property taxes and doing a different kind of tax. I don't know, it was, it was, it was a little foreign to me, and I didn't quite grasp it at first.
Part of it is that some of it stems from census data that eventually gets to be pretty old, ten years old, you know, so.
Yeah, I don't think it was just adjusting the numbers, I thought it was just a.
You sent it to the Board, yeah, I remember you sent it.
Yeah, I'm worried if I keep an eye on that.
Oh, we'll try. One other thing I wanted to point out, NISBA has a very large book of recommendations to the state legislature. And this year, it was interesting, eight of them actually got passed by the legislature, both Houses. Only one of them was signed by the Governor, and that pertained to small school districts and is irrelevant to us. The other ones, in most cases, the Governor said, let's throw it into the budget negotiations. This is an old song we hear from the Governor's mansion. And yes, there are budgetary implications to a lot of those things. I think if I were the Governor, I could have vetoed them or signed them without throwing it into budget. Another aspect of that is that if it goes into budget, we're back into three people in a room. And that gives the Governor more say over all kinds of details, effectively. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Flora?
Yeah, so we had good turnout at the Wellness Committee meeting last week. There's a lot of great stuff going on. For instance, at Ramout, the Farm to Table Committee is still doing some great work, and including fundraising for the school garden and fundraising for a recycling initiative that they're actually working on with students. And in the same sort of sustainability vein, the Sustainability Committee is discussing a plan for washable trays, which are already in place at Sargent, and they're going to be rolling them out at J B F very soon. And actually, students at the high school have petitioned to also have washable trays. And Karen Pagano said that once you get stacking up, they should be able to implement it, so that's pretty cool. There are also a lot of events that are being planned. Family Fitness Night has been set for March first at Ramout. There's a snow date on March eighth, and the subcommittees are starting to get together for that, if anybody is interested in helping out. There's also a Career and Wellness Fair that's planned for April eleventh at the high school. And there's planning happening there, there's outreach with community-based organizations to get them to participate. In addition, just a side note about SAD, that's the Students Against Disruptive Decisions. They just want people to be aware that eighth grade students are invited to join that organization. So that's an open invitation to eighth graders. And that's basically, you know, they promote good decision-making and student well-being, so it's a pretty valuable group. The next committee meeting is Wednesday, February sixth, forty-five, in the community room here at the high school. And there's childcare, so please come. I also just wanted to say personally that I'm really happy about the classroom size numbers in the elementary schools. And I've had a lot of teachers come up to me and say how important it is to them and how much, like, they want to hold on to that. So just something to keep in mind.
If I can ask a question before, I didn't mean to ask questions at everybody. But the, the Family Fitness on the March first and the Health, Health and Career Fair on April eleventh, is that open to outside, outside organizations to participate in, and if so, who should they contact?
That is a question, of course, Celia. I think she would better, be better able to answer that than me.
Ms. Soto, our principal, and Ms. Tanzi, our health education teacher at the high school, are coordinating that as a shared event with the college fair and incorporating Wellness Fair along with it. So outreach to them, and yes, community organizations should, certainly are welcome, and they would be happy to speak to you with more details, if anyone in the, in the community is, or community-based organizations have an interest.
And Family Fitness on the Ramout, who would that be?
Family Fitness, Marion Cirillo is co-chairing that. And so they're just getting planned, started with subcommittee work. And there'll be letters going out to organizations that have participated in the past. And certainly, if anyone specifically has questions, they'll be happy to take them and forward them to them for the subcommittee.
Thank you. So it's Ms. Soto and, I'm sorry, Tanzi?
Ms. Tanzi is our, our health teacher here at the high school. They're doing phenomenal work and really bridging together. What would be of interest for both students and families to make the most of coming out for a night?
Thank you very much.
I've attended a couple of curriculum committee meetings since I was last at a Board meeting. And, let's see, the, the November twentieth one, we heard from Cassandra Orser about the science curriculum writing that's happening at the elementary level. She talked about a new unit has been prepared for every grade level. And that preparation has involved a lot of project-based learning. She felt that we need to, and I'm just saying this because we're entering budget season, that we need to think about P D just for the standards as well, that there, you know, these new standards are a lot to unpack, and that the teachers have had a lot of, you know, it's just been a lot for them, and they could use some support there. Also, Lisa Soto from high school presented a couple of different programs for consideration at the high school. And they, these are, these are, they both had to do with career and technical curriculums that would maybe be, maybe be, not take the place of BOSIs, but just sort of create new opportunities at the high school. And I think that she's working on those and developing them also to talk more about it during the budget season. At the last curriculum committee meeting, as we talked about, Facing History has been activated in our district and at the middle school and high schools, which is really exciting. They're going to talk about the Holocaust as well as some P D for the reconstruction, which is great. Eric Wright also talked about the fact that we have our license for Reflex Math, which is a, an online program for grades two through five that helps with fluency in computation. It's a game-based program that sounds like it's really helpful for students with special needs. There was palpable relief in the room from the teachers that actually use this program. Sounds like it is really helpful, and they weren't sure if the licensing was going to go through. So that, that's, that's also happening. And at the high school. And at the high school, we heard about, Mrs. Soto is working on a SEAL of Bilinguality program for students. And this is for students who are bilingual. They can, I guess they have to test as well as present a project in the second language. But it sounds like it's a great resume builder for college and even just for the job market. So she's working on getting that program intact at the high school. I also attended the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting on December 6. And the, we listened to Superintendent Lyons and Deputy Superintendent Jonathan Brown from Arlington. They presented about their student equity initiative, which was really interesting, because we sort of have our own equity initiative happening here. They had been cited for disproportionality in suspensions of African-American students. That's sort of what kickstarted them into doing this. And they worked with the TACTI program in the city. They did professional development for 40 of their teachers and staff. And then they started working with, and I emailed this to you today, Eric and Matt. They started working with the Center for Strategic Solutions, which is an NYU program. And they were just really proud of it. They, you know, it seemed like really a big point of pride for them. One of the things that seemed most interesting to me, they, like us, they have a teacher and staff equity teams at every school. They also have student equity teams, and that sounds like it's been bumpy but great. You know, a kind of a hard, a hard learning curve of how to allow students to express themselves to teachers in a way that is productive and have teachers ready to hear them, but that it's been a really important part of the process for them. And they also have an equity library at every school, which sounded like a really interesting and doable thing that I think we should think about. And that's it. Oh, and there's a Curriculum Committee meeting on Wednesday, again, already.
All right. I have no comments. All right, the use of the Consent Agenda to amend the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the Consent Agenda may so indicate, and the item will be considered and voted on subsequently. Thus preserving the right of all Board members to be heard on any issue. Is there any item on the Consent Agenda that a member would like to vote? Hearing?
12.12 and 12.15, 12.109 and 12.10.
Hearing the others, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, 12.10 through 12.15 minus 12.12, 12.15, 12.09, and 12.10.
Motion.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, just on 12.08, just to recognize the donations listed. That's always appreciated for people that have been involved, the donors, so I thank you very much.
Absolutely, gentle. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine zero. I need a motion for 12.12.
Motion for 12.12, approving agreement with Open Systems Metro.
Second.
Anthony, comments or questions?
Yeah, the question is, is this, just explain a little bit, I guess. The contract is for monitoring across the district of fire, burglar, and where we have elevators? If that's what it is, just monitoring?
It's just monitoring. We had several companies doing the monitoring. So one of Anthony's goals was to get one company to do it all. And so we are changing to Open System, who can manage all of those. We had Vector Security before, and we had a different vendor for the fire. So, and the other goal was to make the monitoring costs be less than what the others were independently. So by confiding in them, they'll be less.
Okay, so, yeah, it looks like there's about 20 different systems involved here.
The agreements that are attached there are for each building. So there's no new equipment being done, there's no new alarms being done. It's just the monitoring is changing from one company to another.
And who do we use for, this is not service, who do we use for service of this equipment?
I don't know that. There is a vendor, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine zero. Any motion for 12.15?
Motion for 12.15, approve the second reading and adoption of policy 7360, construction contract dating awards.
Second.
Discussion?
My question was, just similar to what we talked about tonight. The first paragraph talks about all construction contracts in excess of 35,000 and purchases of equipment in excess of 20,000 must be advertised, bid on, and awarded to the lowest responsible bidder in accordance with district's policy and procedures for competitive bidding. And I just wanted to say, should we be adding in the option or the opportunity using, you know, the state, you know, the state option for, if we're, you know, we don't necessarily then have to go bid if there's a state option?
The first paragraph is just really defining what the law is. So you have to go out to competitive bid for contractual over 35 and 20. But you're always allowed to use the state contract, because as you heard, the architect said today, they've already been vetted, they've already gone through the process of the state. So, I mean, you can add that to that, but that's why it's not in there, because you always have the option of going in. But if we were to go out, we are not allowed to enter anything that is more than without doing competitive bidding.
So we're considering this fact that the state wanted to do the bidding?
It did the competitive bidding on our behalf, and we're allowed to use it.
Okay, so that's, that's good with me, not under the texture, that's the nuance, so.
I have a question. Are those numbers in this resolution the same as or contain the state law? Is that where we get them?
That is the, yes, those are the numbers.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine zero. Any motion for 12.09?
Motion for approval of 12.09, approve certification of the revised unpaid tax warrant for the 2018, 2019 school tax collection.
Is this your second?
Second.
Discussion?
There's no attachment, so.
The attachments were the same that you had received on the December meeting. The reason you have a revised unpaid tax warrant is because there was a bank error. There was checks on a certain day that did not make it from the branch up to the lockbox. We were notified by M&amp;T Bank, and the tax collector had to individually contact each person. So their checks were all outstanding, but they paid on time. So Mrs. Zoff contacted each one of them, and they had to bring in a replacement check. So the numbers all had to be changed. So you got the summary page with the amount. We've already, we've already done the process of setting the taxes over into county and to the city. So this was more, this is more fixing a bank error that happened, so we ran the amounts.
So the bank error is reflected in the December attachment?
The bank error, the correction of the bank error is in the revised warrant.
And where is the revised warrant?
There's an attachment that has it on there, and that's what we're asking you, we're asking you to vote on the totals.
I didn't see it in board docs.
Yeah, actually, I meant to ask about that too. There was not an attachment in board docs.
That's what the question is.
Okay, so, I mean, there is an attachment, then I apologize that it's not on there. But it looked like the original page, it was just the total amounts have to tie out and have to be put there.
Is there a deadline you're making to approve it?
It's just a correction. It's already been corrected. So, you know, if you pull it off the agenda, it's just going to delay. But you can do that if you want, and I can put it on for the next meeting. It's up to you.
We shouldn't see what we're voting on.
Yeah.
I mean, they were just totals that I was giving you, but that's fine. We can pull it off.
Maybe we should at least be looking at what we're voting on.
So you're making a motion to table, motion to table 12.09, get the right attachment.
Second.
Comments or questions about tabling? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve 12.10, approve the correction of from Basic Star to Enhanced Star against the taxpayer, which resulted in a 726.6 refund.
Second.
So again, there's no attachment. It does seem like it's just one individual, right?
And we were told to do it by the City of Beacon. I normally don't put taxpayers' information on the agenda in public, but the calculation was made. So there was an error from, they were supposed to get Enhanced Star, and they got Basic Star. So the calculation was that they get a refund check, so they paid the wrong tax.
Is that the way we identify, another identity, is that the way we identify a taxpayer? I mean, for individuals in the school district, we give them a number. Is that the way we identify them here for taxes? Or, I mean, taxpayer is a very generic title, like any of us in this room.
We get a form from the City if you can address the taxpayer's identification.
Yeah, just in terms of, in terms of procedure, I mean, should we identify this person on the number so that we know? So that the motion becomes tied to just that person.
Is there paper documentation that states what the person is, who the person is?
We received a directive from the City of Beacon, so we don't really have a choice. We were just told to.
I know the question you're asking, as long as there's backup documentation that says that this has to go forward.
Yeah, there was no executive, there was no executive file, no executive attachment. There's no public attachment. It just kind of says that the way it is.
I think it's just a formality for the Board to approve it, because it's money being generated back to the taxpayer. But it was not an error on our part, and it wasn't an error, it was just a mistake that was done when we got the tax rolls from the City of Beacon. So when they, so the taxpayer questioned it, and they went to the City of Beacon. The City of Beacon sent us the form, so. I know it sounds kind of crazy, but it's just a formality on the side, because it's money.
No, I don't understand why what happened. I mean, you know, Enhanced Star uses more exemption than Basic Star. I understand. It's just that the way, the way the, the way the item is presented for approval to the Board, there's nothing to say that this taxpayer, it could be any taxpayer.
Well, I will, I can say two things. One, I can give you more information in the future.
I don't know, what do you want to call Max? What do you want to, what do you want to call him? I think it's a pettiness that we're discussing it, but whatever you want to do, I'll do. Just tell me what you want to call it.
Name taxpayer 2019-0114. I mean, that's what we need to resolve.
That one's already done. We have that for a resolution that we added to the agenda.
Okay, then.
How about we say taxpayer names by documentation received from the City of Beacon? Because then it's specific to a document that we received.
And the date of that document?
I don't know it, but I can add it to the minutes if you'd like.
As amended.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Well, we got to make a motion to amend it, right?
I said as amended, so.
Okay, no second?
Second.
We're fine, Anthony. Nine zero.
So now we made, passed the motion to amend, then passed the motion to approve?
Are you just trying to irk me or?
No, I'm not. I'm just trying to follow procedure, which is why.
And the procedure was, when you said amendments? I said as amended, are we going to, and you, there was a first, there was a second. And then I was assuming there was no other discussion besides discussion that you may want to have on it. And we've all voted nine oh.
Are you saying that we just need to do the final?
I was asking, I was asking, yeah, I was asking the President of the Board if that's the procedure. If we don't have a final vote after we vote it to amend.
We had a final vote, nine oh it was.
Okay. I'm not trying to irk you. I'm just trying to follow procedure.
I have the Resolution 011419A, which is be resolved that the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District does hereby uphold the building principal's decision and the suspension of student 80251 issued pursuant to educational law 3214. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I believe it was seven two. Are you guys comfortable with that, or do you want to do a roll call?
Roll call.
I'm seven two, but I don't want to irk you.
Roll call.
Mr. Betterbit?
Aye.
Mr. Caslayo?
Nay.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Rakowski?
Nay.
Ms. Stadler?
Aye.
Mr. Sein?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Huer?
Aye.
Mr. White?
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn the executive session to.
To review the employment of particular individuals, and the Board is not expected to take action.
Motion to adjourn the executive session to review the employment history of individuals.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried, nine zero.